Good evening. I'm calling the regular meeting of the University Place City Council for Tuesday, July 6, 2021 to order. We are conducting our meeting remotely in compliance with the special Open Public Meeting Act rules issued by Governor Inslee's emergency order. Reminder to the public, participation in the public comment portions of this meeting will continue to be accepted by an email. Comments received after 5:30 PM deadline will be electronically provided to the city council for their consideration. And subject to technological limitations, the council will also accept telephonic comments. Members from the public can call 1-509-342-7253, conference ID 978259280. For those calling in, please be advised that calls will be taken in the order it is received. At this time, may I ask our city clerk to conduct the roll call, please?
Councilmember Keel.
Councilmember Keel.
Councilmember Keel, present.
Having a hard time hearing Emmy.
Emmy, I can't hear you. Councilmember Pro Tem Lee, I'm sorry.
Senator Pro Tem Lee, present.
Councilmember McCluskey.
Councilmember McCluskey, present.
Councilmember Fleming.
Councilmember Fleming, here.
Mayor Pro Tem Worthington.
Mayor Tim, Mayor Pro Tem Worthington, present.
Mayor Belisi.
Mayor Belisi, present. Mayor, you have a forum. Thank you very much. At this time, I ask Councilmember Keel to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pleasure. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Keel. At this time, I'd like to call for a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Mayor Belisi, this is Mayor Pro Tem Worthington, and I move that we approve the agenda as submitted.
I have a first? Do I have a second?
Councilmember Keel, I second.
I have a first and a second. Are there any objections to approving the agenda as submitted? Okay, hearing none, the approval of the agenda passes unanimously. At this time, I would like to welcome, from the 28th Legislative District, Representative Mari Levitt and Representative Dan Bronowski, here this evening to provide us with a legislative update on what has occurred in Olympia this past session. So with that, I'm going to allow both of them to come forward on screen, and the show is yours.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and council members, and thank you so much for the kind invitation to be with you this evening, and I have a special plate is my heart for University Place. It happens to be where I live, so great to be with you, and also really pleased to be in such great partnership with all of you. And, you know, we have a great city, and you were there, you know, to give us feedback on important pieces of legislation, on policy needs that our constituents, our joint constituents have, and making sure that the city remains strong and can move forward. So very grateful, and for all of you and all of your work and partnership with us to do this. You know, it was a virtual session, and I'm very happy that not one member and not one staff member in Washington came down with COVID. And so, you know, that's a silver lining, I think, for our virtual session, unlike Oregon and Idaho who had to shut down. It was a very busy session, although it was virtually, and we had record number of participation from residents all across the state. And so I think another silver lining, and beyond just not, you know, anyone of our staff getting COVID, is the amount of participation from every area of the state. We had so record number of folks signing in to testify for hearings, signing in pro and con, and talking and being able to provide written statements of why they're pro and con, if they wanted to be more verbose than just a yes or a no. And I'm really hoping that if there is one thing that we carry forward with us in the upcoming session, where I hope that we will be together, and I believe that we will, is that access that residents all across Washington received, in particular the House, because we hadn't been broadly open from a virtual perspective, and so I hope that that continues. As we went into the session, we had four main areas of focus, and we also were asked to limit the amount of bills, to really focus on what residents in University Place and across our state were telling us that was important. And one was certainly addressing COVID, and making sure that we had resources to do contract tracing, make sure PPE was out across both in local jurisdictions, like the University, City of University Place, as well as our hospitals and healthcare providers, you know, focusing on economic recovery for our workers and our small businesses. And we love our small businesses in University Place, and they were suffering, and they still are suffering. So we're not over that hump yet, but really focusing on economic recovery. Another area of focus was climate change and our environment, and making sure that we're whole. And as we see these record heat days that we've had recently, and the record number of wildfires that are expected based on what we're hearing from fire chiefs and fire marshals all across, we know that addressing wildlife management and wildfire management as we go forward was really critical. And then finally, focusing on racial equity and police accountability that we were hearing from residents all across, and making sure, I know one of your priorities as well, on your legislative priority list, was making sure we expanded the amount of basic training classes that were available and offered, and really focused on public safety, and putting more resources into diversion and behavioral health to partner with our law enforcement, who are working really hard, but need support. And so those were the kind of the four areas. There were over 1,300 bills, resolutions, and proclamations that were offered. Approximately 335 made it to the governor's desk for signing, and even some of those that made it to the governor's desk were vetoed. So a little less than 335 that went into law. And so as it relates to our cities, I'll focus on some things, and then pass it over to Representative Bronowski, who will focus on others. A little bit about our small businesses. We did property tax deferral, especially for our commercial leases, to make sure that they have more time to be able to pay their taxes and defer that property taxes. We know that those are high. We focused on making sure that we got grants and loans, and I want to especially focus on small business grants, because our small businesses were saying, "We don't want a loan, because we're already in debt. We're already struggling, and that's something we'll have to pay back." So really trying to work with the Department of Commerce and putting resources into more grants and loans, but both were made available in the millions. We made sure that we shored up the unemployment cliff, insurance cliff, that we were about to go off. And because, you know, the smallest businesses are the ones who pay the higher premiums in terms of percentage, and making sure that they didn't fall off the cliff even more so than they were. And then also making sure that we really got more resources into our employment security department, so that they can faster, get quicker, faster, and more accurate, you know, resources out to our workers, who really are struggling, and making sure that if we could defer licensing, we did, and extended those. But then also making sure that fees for, you know, liquor licenses and other kinds of licenses were suspended for a period of time, because those businesses already couldn't afford to keep their doors open, let alone to pay all the additional fees that they normally would pay. And so, and then we expanded our Main Street program across the state, so which is very exciting, and maybe something University Place could tap into if they so choose. So those were some of the kind of small business areas. And I know from a city perspective, as we looked at your priorities of local flexibility, that was important to you. When we met prior discussion, you talked about that, and making sure that you can use some of the revenue that you get in a way that makes sense for you. And so we were able to do that. And then also some other kind of financing tools that you asked for, that were passed a session to provide some flexibility again in the way that you do that. And then, you know, everyone loves sewers. So very pleased that your Leech Creek, you know, project was funded at over $2 million. And so I'll stop there. There's more I can talk about, and I'm going to talk about veterans in a minute, but I'll pass it over to Rep. Bronowski, and then close out. And happy to answer questions along the way, of course.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Rep. Levitt, and thanks to you, City Council of University Place, for providing us this opportunity to speak to you all tonight, and talk to the folks that are tuning in, and, you know, that are involved, and all the things that we care about in our community. So, yeah, I couldn't have said it any better than myself than what Rep. Levitt said. We accomplished a lot of good things that I think will have a good positive impact to the people of our city and the people of our district. Something that I'd like to point out, you know, we are starting to build that infrastructure in recognition of better access to mental health resources. So, you know, one of the many things that we've realized over the course of the pandemic is that making sure that we take care of our family and neighbors and friends at a time like this, where we're more isolated, where our elderly are more isolated, where, you know, we just haven't had those interactions with friends and family that we as human beings crave, that, you know, those already existing mental health aspects that negatively affect our, that could negatively affect our community have been exacerbated. So some of the things that we're starting to do in infrastructure building is, like Rep. Levitt mentioned before, is creating alternatives to emergency rooms for people that have mental health issues, substance use disorder. We're going to expand the workforce of substance use disorder professionals, so that way, again, we don't have to immediately take someone to the emergency room, or get someone involved in the criminal justice system when they're having a mental health crisis, combined in many cases with a substance use disorder crisis. You know, it's been a great partnership, you know, working with Rep. Levitt and working with our Senator, Senator Nobles, to try to do the absolute best that we possibly could for this community and for our district. And I'm really proud of the work that we've done, not only for this district, and not only for University Place, but for the state as a whole. But we've got a lot of work to do. You know, as Rep. Levitt mentioned, you know, one of the things that we just experienced was an unprecedented heat wave that affected our communities in a way that I think it's unprecedented, right? You know, we've never seen these kinds of temperatures before. So as those kinds of heat-related and extreme temperature events continue in the future, we need to continue to work together in partnership to make sure that we have access to cooling centers, like what we did during the Heat Dome event. And thank you for opening up your city hall for members of our community that don't have access to air conditioning. I mean, it was a real literal lifesaver, and I don't take that for granted, and I don't take that lightly. You know, I was working on Sunday for the fire department, and we took many people in, and we were trying to get many people into these cooling centers. That's something that we're going to need to collaborate on more in the future, to make sure that more of our community has access to those kinds of things. And continue to make sure that we do a good job for members of the community that are most vulnerable, like I said, the elderly before. And of course, you know, I think we're doing a really good job in partnership to make sure that we try to recognize some of those societies most vulnerable, to get them access to the resources that they need. So, again, I hope, you know, the city is happy with the work that we were able to do collaboratively. We will continue to work that way in the future. I have no doubts about that. And, yeah, I think we did pretty well with, you know, being able to provide a good benefit for folks that live in the community. So, again, you know, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions. You know, it was a unique session for me, you know, being a freshman legislator, working entirely online, just like veteran legislators like Rep. Levitt. But, yeah, it was a unique experience, and I learned a lot, and I'm very grateful to be able to be here and be able to serve all you and the members of our community. So thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight.
And I'll just close out with a couple other items. You know, we know that, they'll speak of education, and we learned pretty quickly that broadband, we knew this already, we all knew this, but the need for broadband and the access available, you know, just there wasn't a, there was a disconnect in terms of access versus need. And so making sure that we're expanding and infusing dollars and resources into expanding broadbands at all areas of our state, rural and urban alike, because all four corners needed that, especially with education, and making sure that our schools have the resources that they need to get laptops and get those Chromebooks out for our kids, to make sure that we had meals that were distributed, and we're grateful for our bus drivers in University Place who delivered meals to families. And I saw them lined up, because I was virtual, you know, on different corners. And so partnering with our school districts as well, to make sure that we were taking care of families, not only in University Place, but all across our state. And then the one other thing I'll say for our workers and our small businesses, childcare, as a mom of three, I can tell you childcare is essential for me to be able to do my work and go to work, whether it's in my office as I'm sitting here now, or off as I need to be, especially now that we've opened up. And if it weren't for access to childcare, I wouldn't be able to do that. And sometimes I don't have it, and sometimes I bring a kid along. And sometimes I don't have it, and sometimes I bring a kid along, and I'm lucky to be able to do that. But not every worker is able to do that. And so we really infused a lot of dollars to making sure that we're taking care of our childcare providers, not only expanding facilities through the capital budget, but then also providing higher provider rates. You know, childcare is one of the lowest paid area, and yet they take care of our most precious and our most important investment in our future. And so I'm making sure that we took a look at that, and businesses were clamoring for that too. Our Association of Washington Business said that, you know, they're losing great workers because those workers couldn't find childcare. So continuing to work on some of those things and really grateful for all the the federal dollars that you received, that you also sent out for rental assistance and taking care of our small businesses. So it really was a collaboration and partnership and and also taking care of our children and parents in their school district. So again, happy to be here, very honored to serve you and our residents, and look forward to working together. And if you certainly have any needs, we want to hear them.
Well, I want to thank you both for being here this evening and providing us with this update. This is a presentation, however, I will suspend the rules. And if there are any questions or comments that any of our council members would like to ask of Representative Levitt or Representative Barnoski, this is your opportunity. I want to thank you guys definitely for supporting the two million dollar sewer grant that is going to definitely put a huge dent in our infrastructure and our ability to partner with Pierce County to get some sewer into areas of our community that are definitely long overdue. So thank you so much for that. Anybody else have any comments at this point or questions to ask? Mayor Pro Tem Worthington, followed by Councilmember Keel.
Well, thank you, Mayor Belisi. Appreciate that. And Representative Levitt, thank you for being here with us. And also Representative Barnoski, thank you as well. And particularly thank you for the good work. You know, we had several requests. We felt they were important to our community, and you were there and you listened, and you delivered as much as I believe you could. And we really, personally, I appreciate that as a member of the council and as a resident. So I think that was work well done and certainly well appreciated. The, as the mayor was saying, just as an example, that sewer work, that's going to help us protect our environment in those areas for years, areas that not have the service of sewers but had to rely on septic. And that also does a lot for our economic development because in the future, more things can happen. And that also opens new doors and creates opportunities and jobs and wages. So, yeah, it's a key piece that keeps on giving, so to speak, and glad to have your help there. Also, you appreciated the flexibility that you likewise helped deliver in terms of how we can deal with financing issues, particularly in these difficult times. That's in itself, while it's a little complex, it's an important win at the end of the day, and appreciated you diving in and working with that. And then with regards to law and justice reform, good strides, important work there that certainly was on our agenda, and I also appreciate the work done there. I was going to mention that I had the opportunity recently to spend a good portion of a day with some police officers. And I know for them, when they look at the changes, they're beginning to wonder, well, okay, now, how do I implement this? And there's a little bit of a lag in the information from their perspective about what those steps to implementation are and how to do that appropriately within the intent of the legislation. But I'm sure different agencies will get that information to them and will help them with that. Nonetheless, I had mentioned to them I may have an opportunity to share that and wanted to deliver that information on their behalf as well. They do important work. Obviously, we all rely on them. But the steps we have in law and justice reform are, as it turns out, necessary steps. Well, thank you again, and I think that those are my comments for the moment.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Worthington. Councilmember Keel.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And I want to thank you both for being here too as well. Again, all the, all of the work that you've done for us, in particular as a city, very appreciative of it. You know, if those of you that lived in our community a long time, you know, we've been talking about sewers for years. And that is certainly going to help us along the way, and we still have a lot more work in that regard to do. And we have a lot more work in other areas too as well. And we'll be talking to you as we do every year, all the time, you know, and we won't wait until, you know, to go down to the hill, but we'll, we hope to have this open communication with you throughout the whole year about the things that are going on in our city. And so we'll certainly, when it's appropriate, talk to you about the things that we need to look at in the future. One of the things that I'm of particular interest, just personally for myself, is our public safety. And Rep. Barnoski, I know you can appreciate this as well as that we really, for our police and our policing, there is a need there for us to shore that up. And so always open to some ideas and how we can do that. And we want to, I think, this coming year, maybe talk about that a little bit. The second thing I would say is, again, like Mayor Pro Tem Worthington talked about, around the police reform that we did institute as a state. I want to thank you both for your part that you played in that and the fact that the entire legislature was able to pull that off. It was great. A lot of us as individual citizens and council members participated in that work. Association of Washington City has also participated in that as well. And I would just say that in the coming year, what AWC does, as you well know, really touches all of the cities, all two hundred and eighty-one towns and cities in our state. And so I would encourage you to pay attention to, you know, kind of what they're talking about, what they're saying, and when the lobbyists come and talk to you about, they really are talking for all two hundred and eighty-one towns and cities. And so hopefully that would, that would at least raise something in your mind to pay attention to. So thank you again, and I appreciate you being here.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Council, Representative Levitt, you had your hand raised.
Yes, yes, madam. If I would just make one quick comment, then you have your business to carry on. And I really appreciate the comments, Councilmember Worthington, on law enforcement. And few folks may know this, but Rep. Barnoski and I met with every police chief in our district, and we sought them out and asked them for their feedback and opinion and perspectives on the various different pieces of legislation that were coming forward towards us. We also met with law enforcement groups and workers as well, our law enforcement workers and unions. So we met both with the chiefs and law enforcement workers because they maybe had a little bit of different perspective on some of these issues. But we sought to understand what was important, and as we looked at the policy to really understand what the impact might be. So I think that's important. And then the other thing I would say for Councilmember Keel, thank you for your comments on AWC. I'm part of our local government group. And so we, there are some group of legislators who get together with AWC members and are lobbyists. We don't wait for them to come see us, whether it's virtual or others. But we have regular calls and throughout the session or regular meetings when we were in person to talk about the variety of different things. And it's a bipartisan group, so I hear you. Thank you.
Well, thank you. This is our final opportunity for anybody else on council that has a comment or question. Okay, not seeing any. Thank you so much for your, for your work and for helping the citizens of University Place, as well as the state of Washington, get through this difficult time here and for being so willing to come forward and provide the legislative updates on a regular basis. Really appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Yep, thank you.
Go and enjoy the sunshine.
Thank you.
Bye. Okay, at this point, I'm going to call myself out. Thank you to Councilmember Keel. I forgot to call for a motion to excuse Councilmember Figaroa. So may I have a motion, please?
Mayor Belisi, this is Mayor Pro Tem Worthington, and I move to excuse Councilmember Figaroa from this evening's meeting.
May I have a second?
Councilmember Keel, a second.
Thank you both for your motion. Is there, are there any objections? Okay, not hearing any motion passage unanimously. And thank you to keeping me on track there. I appreciate it. At this time, our next item on the agenda is the public comment section. As of five thirty this evening, we had no public input. So therefore, you had no, you had no emails, and we also have no citizens on our call at this time. So we will be closing the public comment section and moving on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted?
Mayor Belisi, Mayor Pro Tem Worthington, once again, and I move for the approval of the consent agenda as submitted.
Okay, I have a first or I have a second?
Councilmember Keel, a second.
Okay, I have a first and a second. Any objections to the consent agenda as proposed? Not seeing any motion carries unanimously. Okay, our next item on the agenda is city manager report. May I ask our city manager, Steve Sugg, to come forward?
Well, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I've got some really good news to report this evening. This morning, I was notified that the city has received notice of a grant award for Cirque Park from the Washington Recreation and Conservation Office. That is a seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollar project, fifty percent grant funded, fifty percent city match from our park impact fee fund. So this is a pretty nice way to start the week. Gary's been working on this, pursuing this grant for close to two years. As you know, we got the pandemic interrupted that process. We held out hope that it would, it would pick back up, and it did. And we got the news this morning. So I'm, you never know until you get the notice. We remained hopeful that we had a strong project. And the council played an important role without, we would not, if you hadn't approved the pros plan, when you did, we wouldn't be able to apply for that grant, and then thus I wouldn't be reporting to you tonight. So thank you, council, for all the efforts of, you know, and the long meetings and your involvement with that process. So the project, I was anticipating that this would be a summer twenty-two project, but Gary reported to me earlier this evening that we've had plans that we're going to dust off, and we believe that we can get this project started this fall. That would, that's the goal, so that we can get something moving sooner. The project includes expanding the playground, adding a new play structure, constructing a paved walking trail around the park perimeter, something that's been needed to make this more ADA accessible for all users, nine exercise stations, and upgrading the skate park, which has gotten a lot of use. It's now time to upgrade that. And removing the wooden structures and the addition, and we'll add some new concrete features to that skate park. So very good for all age groups. Again, we anticipate starting construction sometime this fall. Now, moving on to the second project, which you green lighted last month in early June, the Chambers Creek Trail Bridge Number One, crossing Chambers Creek, which will now connect the Lakewood side to the UP side, there's trails on both sides, to make this even a more usable canyon, which, by the way, got great, wonderful use during the heat wave last week. And, you know, you know, it's a good thing when parking's a problem because people were using it. And it was enjoyed, you know. It's just what a great place to cool off, talk about, you know, getting out of the hot sun and into a beautiful environment. So with that, so the next time, hopefully, heat wave, you know, long in the future, that we'll have, you know, lots of bridges to cross back and forth across the, but we're going to get this first bridge done. And we believe it'll be complete by the end of the year. It's a partnership with Pierce County and the City of Lakewood. You council green lighted the city's portion last project of this project last month, our financial contribution. Pierce County is the construction manager, so they're going to oversee the construction. It's a prefabricated bridge. We'll let you know when it gets ready to be installed because it ought to be, you know, something to observe. So when done, all trail users will be able to cross over to Lakewood. So I'm very happy to report on those two projects. It's very appropriate, I guess, coming out of the pandemic, that we're making a strong push on parks, which have played such an important role, not only here but everywhere during the pandemic. So that's my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sugg. At this time, I would like to open it up for council comments and reports. And the first person on my list is Councilmember Keel, also known as President of the AWC. Congratulations. So do you have any report outs, Councilmember Keel?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I don't have any reports today. A lot of stuff in the works, but I'm sure I'll be reporting here in the next few months, but nothing right now.
Okay. Councilmember Pro Tem Lee, do you have any report outs?
Councilmember Pro Tem Lee, yes, just one comment. On July seventeenth, all the registered voters in University Place will receive their ballots for one position on the school board. There'll be three names on it, and that should not diminish the importance of this campaign because the school board is very important to our taxpayers, both they provide the philosophy and guidance for the educational philosophy of the city, and also almost forty percent of their tax dollars go to education. So everybody has an interest in the school board. I ask you that you, even though there's only three candidates that you vote, it's important. And your vote does count. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. At this time, Councilmember McCloskey, do you have a report out at this time?
Yes, I do. Thank you. Congratulations, Councilmember Keel. We're very proud of you and your tenure on the AWC for us and the rest of the constituents that you represent. I had an opportunity to, to be, go into a virtual meeting with the Legislative Twenty-Eighth for their coffee with the legislators and the senator. And it's interesting because there was probably about twenty-some people on the call and about half a dozen or so were UP residents that made comment. And so some of their concerns were in regards to having our, our kids graduate with a financial business sense as simple as how to write a check. Well, you know, what do the stocks and bonds sort of meet? Mean, how do you, how do you invest for the future? You know, the difference between mortgage and rent. So, so this, and the comment back was that there was a mandate from the state a couple of years ago to implement this. However, there was no funding applied to it. So the legislators will be trying to work on that and to go back and check and see how, how it is, how the program is, is going. Because that is one major concern when they do feedback from our Curtis graduates, that they're not prepared to be able to deal with the real life. Sure, they got into college, maybe, but then what? You know, mommy and daddy are not always there because sometimes they're across the country. So, so anyway, I thought that was interesting as a side. So something that we should be mindful of as a city council too, I think, to make sure that there's some financial viability with our graduates just to do, you know, to encourage that curriculum. And the other one that caught my attention was Dan Gray. He's an ex park commissioner, and he was interested in the school district doing the, the boundary adjustments to incorporate the Furcrest. Well, the UP residents, but they go to Tacoma School District to incorporate them into the UP. You know, it's an ongoing thing for many, many years. But now that Tacoma has sold that site to us for a park, that their argument is no longer really viable anymore, so to. So to, they asked, he asked the 28th to take up that baton and see if they can encourage that. So, and then some few other things like with the DSHS releasing some, some of the psychotic patients probably before they're really ready to be released and to ensure that there's more accountability, especially when they transfer into the adult homes. They'll be more prevalent in, in the future, that to keep our, our community safe and to also ensure that there is a fair share, not to just dump everyone around Pierce County. So, and a couple of other things, but that was kind of the highlights of that meeting. And I want to also congratulate Mr. Cooper and his staff on getting the Cirque Grant. The skateboard park is well in need of getting some fine tuning per se. And there's things that were, were starting to becoming extremely deteriorated. So I'm really excited because that park is well used, that that would be rebuilt and hopefully rebuilt into the light that the skaters like to, to use the skate park, to encourage them to, to use it. And also the build out of the tot lot into a different age groups and, and the trail around. There'll be immense enhancements for Cirque Park that I think will drive more people to, to use, to use that, that park as well. So, thank you so much for your expertise and assistance in receiving the grant, Mr. Cooper. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Fleming, do you have any report outs or comments at this time?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My only comment is likewise to congratulate Councilmember Keel on his new appointment and position and look forward to some great leadership and great things there with AWC. And short of that, I have nothing else to report.
Thank you, Councilmember Fleming. Mayor Pro Tem Worthington, any comments or report outs?
Thank you, Mayor Belisi. I have a couple of things I wanted to touch on. And, and all at first top of that list is to congratulate Councilmember Keel on his election to the AWC presidency, a unanimous vote, if I recall right. So, well done, can't do better. And that, that's super. It's a very good, you know, you've worked hard on that. It's well earned and you can do a lot to help the organization, our organization. So, thank you, Kent. That's great. Excuse me. Also wanted to express the congratulations to Mr. Cooper, the Parks Group and the Parks Board for their efforts and success with our grant award. That's great to hear and strengthens our community and park system. Super. Excuse me for just a second. Thank you. I also wanted to share that I, as we know, Sunday was 4th of July and I took the opportunity for, I think, my third time, riding with our police force in a ride along on the 4th of July to see what that was like. And it was a, it's always informative, always very interesting to see our officers working and the professionalism they bring and the type of work they have to do and need to do. And certainly, Sunday night, my five hours or so with them was, in my view, well spent. Did an excellent job. Deputy Jason Smith was driving the car and kind enough to let me ride along with him and had a variety of activity going on from welfare checks to someone else who needed assistance with the help of the fire department. Got somebody the assistance they needed, a chance to kind of work things out, what would look like in their lives. And then, of course, being the 4th of July, a number fireworks comments or calls. And so we had, what I referred to, I guess, is a well over 20 different fireworks contacts, but not 20 different people, not 20 people. It was more in excess of about 100 people, more like 150. So, one of those events was probably in itself close to 80 or so. And it was at the former Red Apple site. And they had an unofficial fireworks demonstration or whatever there put on by folks. But it was unfortunately on someone else's property and then also involved with fireworks that were not, not legal in our community. And so, the officers came in and people dispersed. There was not any type of confrontation in, in this. However, there were a couple of fires burning after the people left from the debris that was left behind. And so with the officers putting out those small fires and the nearby business supplying their fire extinguisher, things were extinguished. But an eventful night. We, I've had some perspective now and seeing how our fireworks ordinance works. And a couple of quick observations. One is, this was busy, but it wasn't as busy as it used to be. Every year is different. It falls on a different day of the week. You can't really tell. Lots of variables. But the, the number of the contacts were down from my previous experience. And I think call volumes were about double, still the busiest day of the year for our, the 911 call center and for the officers responding. So it isn't as though it's a light day. It's not. It's just not as bad as it was, at least from my observations in UP. And that it is still difficult. And partly it's difficult because we have, unfortunately, in my view, a confusing message about fireworks. We allow some, but we don't allow all. And citizens have a hard time grasping those details at a busy time in their lives. So, it was not uncommon to hear someone say on the way home today or yesterday, I picked up some fireworks to share with the kids. And by the way, virtually every contact we had, children were, were present. It was a family activity. It wasn't as though it was some sort of, of, of party for adults. It was a family event and really, as people got educated, they wanted to do the right thing and they stepped away and, and stopped the fireworks activity. It was, our officers, I think, did a great job in the education piece. Wasn't a citation written this time. It was all about education. But I do think there's a chance for us to do better in our legislative role to clarify what our expectations are in the community. And so that it is easier for officers to enforce and our citizens to understand. So, I just wanted to share those thoughts and my observations. And I really appreciated Deputy Jason Smith's work and the other deputies with him. It was a busy night and some challenging times, but we've got some good folks taking care of us. And these, I'm proud to have them on our force and proud to be with them. Thank you, Mayor. That's my comments.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I too want to say that this 4th of, 4th of July celebration, while for some neighborhoods may have still appeared to sound like a war zone from the fifth floor of the, of my apartment and the center of town, I thought our citizens did a remarkable job in observing the hours of fireworks discharge. They observed the rules. I don't think I heard many, if any, M80s going off like I have in prior years. It did appear to me that the worst hours were between nine and, and midnight with the majority of it being 10 to, to midnight. So I want to thank those citizens that did observe the discharge hours and made every effort to try and discharge legal fireworks. I do agree with Mayor Pro Tem Worthington that allowing some fireworks while not allowing others when you go to a, a legal stand to purchase does make it difficult to know what is allowed and what isn't. But the fact that the citizens did observe those hours is, was the best that it's ever been in prior years. Unfortunately, those citizens that want an outright ban, I don't believe that is an, an accomplishable task as long as we have fireworks for sale. Our officers are unfortunately engaged in more needed activities, domestic violence, DUIs, you know, assault and battery type activities that, to stop to go to a fireworks complaint is a difficult task. We are still working and I think we, as a council, will work to try and find ways to better educate our citizens on the fireworks regulations. But again, I do want to thank those citizens that did make every effort to, to limit their use and to keep it confined to within the hours that are allowed under our regulation. I thought it was a, a great time. It was great this year compared to years past. And the fact that those that did not discharge due to the dry conditions and observed the advisory from the Pierce County Fire District, I thought kudos and congratulations to those citizens. So hopefully, we can take these lessons learned as we move forward into next year. Other than that, I also wanted to let both council staff and the citizens know that I will be out of countries beginning this Friday, July 9th, and I will return on the 17th. But I will leave everything in the capable hands of Mayor Pro Tem Worthington. I will be back for our next council meeting, however. So, just wanted to let everyone know. So other than that, I had no other comments. It's been a relatively quiet couple of weeks, being that we're in the heart of summer. And I'm glad that we are finally open as a, as a state and we can start really fully supporting our, our local community restaurants and other businesses that had been restricted during this past 16 month period of time. So I encourage everybody, get out and get to know your neighbors again without a mask on that. It's wonderful. It's amazing how people change in a, in a little bit of 16, 16 month period of time. So with that, I do notice that we have Senator Nobles that has joined us. However, I hate to inform you, but we are well into our council comments, moving on into study session. Your counterparts were on earlier this evening and gave us a legislative update. So, so I want to thank you for at least joining us as a, as a citizen. All right, our next item, we're moving into study session. We have a legislative proposal that was presented by Councilmember McCloskey and Councilmember Fleming entitled the Parks Budget Adjustment. So I am hoping that, yes, Councilmember Keel, you raised your hand.
Yeah, Mayor, I, I apologize for jumping in. And I understand about our agenda and that Senator Nobles did, did come a little bit late. But since she is here, I just wondered if, if she had just, you know, a couple, two, three minutes, anything that she wanted to say to us. I'd be interested in hearing from her. I mean, we're going to have to work with her all throughout the year and I just want to give her the respect of being here, knowing that, you know, that she's here. So, that'd be great.
Okay. With that, Senator Noble, so I'll give you a couple of minutes here to provide a brief update.
Thank you. I do appreciate it and I'm glad that my colleagues were able to provide an update earlier. Hi to all of you. Thank you so much for serving the City of University Place. I wanted to take a minute to just breeze through some, some of what I worked on this session and I hope that we will continue to work together on behalf of the City of University Place. But I focused this session on healthcare and behavioral health and public safety, education, police accountability, childcare, transportation, housing, just a plethora of, of issues here. Equity, climate change, and in particular, also work to make sure that we were available to listen to any community projects, to fund, to fund projects in University Place, like the Curran House Museum. We also funded projects around the district, but I encourage the City of University Place to just reach out for future infrastructure funding or community projects funding. You probably heard from the other two thirds of our delegation that we are just so excited to support the city and support our entire district and wanting to be just really good, strong partners. This will be my first short session coming up in January, so I don't know what to expect. But please feel free to reach out to me. I'm still working on my priorities for the session, but I hear it's a lot of cleanup of, or trying to pass any legislation that we couldn't pass this longer session. But I'm grateful for each of you and committed to working so hard on behalf of our district and my office is available to help with, you know, continued COVID-19 recovery and employment options for our community or navigating any of our state offices. So if there's anything that I can do as your senator, please feel free to reach out to me, even if it's, you know, you're applying for a federal grant and our office can provide a letter of support and happy to do that as well. But just thank you for giving me some time to briefly breeze through some of the work that our office has been doing. But you have an incredibly strong delegation that is willing and able to support the city. So, just call on us at any time. But again, just thank you all very much.
Thank you very much, Senator Nobles. Appreciate it. Thank you for being here. Okay, now we will move on to the legislative proposal, the Park Budget Adjustment. Councilmember McCloskey and Councilmember Fleming, this is your presentation.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Belisi. Well, it had been massaged through many, many, many years, especially with the deep staff cuts that, that we had in 2010 or prior to 2010, that we knew that the scope of our work was going to increase on the existing staff. And the staff had stepped up to the plate, worked diligently and have produced amazing results. Sometimes we think we're at full staff as we sit on the dais and we start thinking about different ideas and projects that we want funded and completed and, and we keep adding to their plate. As I look around the city from that time to now, Mr. Cooper and his public work staff in the parks and his park staff has increased their workload immensely. I'm sure it's over 150, 200%. With, if you consider all the tree scapes that, that we put in along the streets, that, that needs to be kept up. The addition of several parks that have opened up for citizens' use. Our town center, Homestead Park, and soon to be retrofitted. And, you know, Kobayashi is not an easy park to take care of either because it's a hidden gem and people know it's hidden and they like to do things that they, that, that are hidden from purview. So that keeps, keeps, you know, Mr. Cooper's staff on his toes. And with that, the, you know, sometimes a simple request that is made can break the, the camel's back. And I think we're probably pretty much at that breaking point. There was a, our citizens and volunteers cannot keep up with the scope of their work and duties. They're aging out respectfully. And whatever the city has done that had banked on these volunteers, we can bank on the volunteers going into the future. We will have a museum to take care of. A hobby to maintain and all the events that go around that beautiful park. We, we will also have a homestead redesigned that will create also more work ending with the spelling, particularly if it happens, the addition of the wild side, some of the transitions of the roadies go over to, to that side for that park scape. So, with that, and also the addition of the Veterans Memorial that will come into our, our laps as well. And they're all welcome, beautiful gifts, great amenities to the city. And it creates, as is stated in the proposal, cultural value. And also not only cultural value, but a quality of life and a way for people to be very proud of their city. Maintenance staff and the park staff are not up to snuff and our parks become somewhat in disrepair and our street scapes start to look a little dumpy. People won't have that same purview of the city and in turn may not respect or enjoy it quite, quite as much. So in this proposal, I don't want to read it verbatim to you. I think- I think that might be redundant, and I don't want to be redundant. So the bottom line is for us to look at where are we at? Where did we come from? Where are we at? What are the facts and figures today? You know, what what are the constraints on the staff today? What what sort of tools can we give our Public Works Department and our parks facility to to provide the services that the city council expects from them? And we expect them to be top notch spit and polish because when people come into the city, that's what they see and that's what they reflect upon us. And that will also encourage economic development on the on the back end of all of this. So for that, to to also understand our vision as a council, our expectations and how we can help Mr. Cooper and his staff implement those expectations as well and to look at the fiscal impact primarily and what we could do for not only the implementation of what we want, the the long term longevity, the protection of this infrastructure, what he needs for repairs and cost and services over time, equipment repairs that that he will need to to keep to keep up our our expectations and our citizens' expectations as well because they're not going to expect anything less than what they see today. And to also, when we look at the green, the greener aspect of our city, we know that the green is living and eventually needs to be replaced. So what is the impact of that to establish a perennial infrastructure so that we can turn over the our green space to keep it green or greener going into the future? And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Councilmember Fleming, because he has some thoughts in regards to that, but primarily that was my emphasis on this so that we we could aid and assist and keep up the quality standards that our citizens expect and have known to to expect in in the past to continue that into the future.
I guess that's my cue to start here. So thank you, Councilmember McCloskey. You know, Councilmember McCloskey has given, I believe, an excellent summary of what the proposal before the council is. I think it's important that we, as the policymakers of the city, really understand and have or have a clear understanding of the challenges that we face, especially when it comes to the growth of our community and the maintenance of the amenities that we have. We may or may not be cognizant that the park staff right now comprises of only 2.5 FTE folks and in addition to volunteers. But yeah, as we heard earlier this evening, we've got a new grant that will expand the amenities at the Cert Park. Last council, we passed a proposal to completely redo the Homestead Park, which will add new amenities and new maintenance requirements in addition to the other parks that we have in the city and the maintenance requirements that go along with that, that Councilmember McCloskey alluded to. So, you know, really what this proposal does is it allows the council to take a step back and really try to keep pace with the growth. And we knew as we've gone through the multiple proposals, specifically with development of housing and looking at other infrastructure improvements, it allows the council to take an opportunity to just look at how do we keep pace with that proposed growth and current growth that we have for our park systems and make, if you will, a mid course adjustment to provide the services and the support that's needed. I I want to emphasize, this is not a proposal that has come from staff, but really through what I consider the the vision of Councilmember McCloskey that I support and endorse, that we as a whole body take it up and take a hard look at just what can we do? What should we do as we continue to expand these amenities for our community?
I will open it up for council questions at this time. Councilmember, any council questions or comments regarding this proposal? Councilmember Keel.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you both for your proposal. I I looked at it briefly. I didn't get into the the details of all of it. And in what I read, I still had some questions about it. And I mean, the big, I think it's a great idea that we need to do that because, you know, on the surface, what you're pointing out is absolutely something that we need to pay attention to. And I was just wondering, you know, reading the words is one thing, but just what's the what's the ask? I mean, if if there was, if you could change it right now, I mean, what what does the solution look like if there was no impediments to to anything? What what are you getting at is what I'd like to know. The vision, what's the vision that you have?
Councilmember Keel, if I may, I'm trying to wrap my head around your question. And so I believe you're asking what would be the outcome of of this proposal? Basically, and the outcome would be that our Parks Department and our maintenance, the Public Works Department would have the funds and the capability that they need to sustain the parks and recreation and the streetscapes to the council's quality and our citizens' quality expectations that they see it today. And and as we grow, because we're going to grow our streetscapes, we're going to grow our parks, you know, we're talking about sometimes even little pocket parks. And also with the pocket parks, you know, who's who's going to take on that responsibility? And if it turns turns out the city needs to manage the managers, which is probably the complexes that the pocket parks are in, you know, that's what we do. We have code compliance officers for that. So how does that impact that? So not only the, you know, the the funding, looking at the funding, the staffing now and into the future, and also looking at the the total scope. We have parks that are undeveloped, that should be opened for for use and maybe go in baby steps. You know, there's some master site plans on the on the parks to strategically go about grant funding. Well, Mr. Cooper needs people to do that, and we need to pay people to go out and do that. You know, they he's his staff, as all the other city staffers are, you know, we're we pressed the envelope for the last 10, 10, 20, 20 years, 20 years, probably. Well, especially when we did, when we had to cut staff so so dramatically, we never have staffed up and we're losing some strategic directors. And and there's no really new hires that are kind of coming up. So that means the workload is going to be broadened and deepened. And so I'm looking at especially the Parks Department to to ensure that when when people use our parks, that it's going to be maintained, that not, and especially for for their own safety of the users and also for the quality of experience of the users. Because if they don't enjoy the park, we have this park we spent lots of money on and nobody's going to be willing to return, maybe because it's overgrown or the grass wasn't watered and, you know, for whatever reason, I don't know. You know, there's a different sundry sundry reasons to that. And it comes down to a function of staffing and, you know, not to micromanage Mr. Cooper and his department. He knows how to keep keep our parks looking great. We just need to give him the tools to do that. And, you know, a example would be, if I may, the Colgate Park entrance to to that. Volunteers were taking care of it. They're aging out, is having a harder time to maintain that that area. And Mr. Cooper can't, you know, he doesn't know where to pull the funding and the staffing to do it. And 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 that's not a fair situation for him to be in. That's very frustrating because he's very proud of his work and 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 what he does. And he doesn't want that to reflect poorly upon him, which, you know, it doesn't on my part. I look at it as a council member and says, well, what can we do better as a city council to get him the tools so that he doesn't feel so frustrated when he can't do certain things if he can't get to a certain park that might need some services quickly? If there is a safety situation that has happened, not not as far as a police action, but as far as just taking care of the infrastructure and making sure it's safe for the users to use. And and so that that's kind of what what I'm driving, Councilmember. So.
Still, I got a follow up, and thank you for that. I mean, this is stuff like you can't read in the that one pager, right? So the follow up is then I see the vision, the outcome. Is there a tool? How do how do we communicate? I mean, with, you know, with what the vision is, right? So is it is it a document? Is it a bunch of spreadsheets with people and parks? And we have a park planning thing, you know, that that said, here are the things we need in these parks and here's when we're going to pay for them, and it was a bunch of grants. I mean, I'm just trying to get at what's the tool? And I think Councilmember Fleming, it sounds like you may be understanding what I'm saying. So what what's the tool that we're going to use to communicate the need and how and when we're going to meet those needs?
Well, that's what we need to determine, Councilmember Keel, is that, you know, Councilmember Fleming and I can't do it for us. There's seven of us here. So the initial proposal says city staff is to prepare, present, and be prepared to implement a proposal for an expansion of scope of work for park staff, which includes, but is not solely limited to the maintenance and repair of city parks through citizen donations intended for parks, development of parks, ball field, streetscapes. Work plans should include opportunities for additional parks that will be onboarding and budget adjustments that supports the council visions for streetscape and park conditions, uses and maintenance cost, and also to include our community partners, Autobahn. I visited Adriana Hess the the other day, and the Autobahn is and the city is a great partnership there. You know, how is that working? What what things do they need to improve upon? There's certain areas of that park that probably could 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 use some a little bit more TLC and but that that would be secondary into the overall proposal, but to go into each and every park and 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 look and ensure that, you know, like it why, you know, I built the creek at Adriana Hess and it's dry. Is the fountain not working anymore? Is the motor broken or, you know, because the the little creek was supposed to be an attraction for for birds, you know, it's a feature there. So, you know, it's it's cute as a dry bed, but what what happened to it? And how can we do better to to enhance it for the further bird sanctuary? And I'll, I'll, I know I jumped in, Councilmember Fleming, so I'm going to acquiesce and thank you so much for your kindness. I acquiesce the floor to back to you.
Well, thank you, Councilwoman McCloskey. You know, Councilman Keel, maybe to restate what Councilmember McCloskey has already said and hopefully answer your question a little bit different. I I see three different things that kind of come together to to really address the issue. And I think number one, as Councilmember McCloskey had pointed out earlier, you know, we've got dwindling resources of manpower or human power to maintain our current level. Now, when you look at how the city operates, the city operates at levels of services that's driven by council policy, which is driven by budget. So if you take that same model and you apply it to parks, I think what we're looking here is really to establish through council policy what level of services are acceptable to the council, and those can vary to maintain the parks at certain levels of functionality. And that would then be driven by budget and is driven by proposal. So it's really looking, you know, to Councilmember McCloskey's point, working collaboratively with the staff to come up with that proposal for the council, really to kind of chew on and digest and and then ultimately decide on of what is going to be required at certain levels to provide certain resources and support to maintain our parks at certain levels. And I don't know what those are because we've never been down this pathway before. You know, it's trying to stay ahead of the curve versus behind the curve, but being a little bit of visionary to determine what do we want for our community as we go forward? And I hope that answers your your question that you had.
Yeah, it it does. I mean, because I saw all the, because what I read about plans and work plans, I was like, we already do that, I think. You know, it it may not be adequate, but we're doing it, you know, and, you know, we've got a big gap, you know, from the work plan that staff produces to what we can do with our resources. And so it sounds like you're trying to shore the gap up, and I was just trying to figure out what are we doing to to close the gap? So that helped me. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Pro Tem Lee, followed by Mayor Pro Tem Worthington.
Councilmember Pro Tem Lee, I understand the problem. I'm thank you for explaining the proposal because I too was didn't quite understand where this was going. I agree, we have a growing number of parks, most, I say most, some of them are undeveloped. So that's going to take manpower and money to bring them up to a operating park. And then we're working on Homestead Park, which is a major project. That's going to take more people and money. So I agree with the fact that we should get ahead of the game and make our parks first class, something that we can be proud of. Also, I'd like to fall back on our flash vote. Recreation is also an important part of the plan of the puzzle. And I don't know, perhaps that just makes it more complex if you throw in recreation. And so I I totally agree with the fact that we have to now's the time to to get ahead of the game and make our parks and develop our parks that we already have, make them useful. But I also think that in the in the wings, that the citizens are also interested in some type of a recreation program or partnership so we can use these parks to their potential. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor Pro Tem Worthington.
Thank you, Mayor Bellici. Appreciate that. So an interesting conversation, interesting proposal for us as we take a look at things here. We have, as always, a lot of things in front of us and and so I'm thinking about this in terms of the looking for this level of service in terms of maintenance for our parks. If I heard Councilmember Fleming, right? That was certainly a path that we could could work towards. The we have a current issue, apparently, of the Colgate Park needing maintenance and us not traditionally having that because volunteers were engaged there. I'm afraid I don't know what level of maintenance they were maintaining and and what it takes to replace that is really sort of the question. And then if there's there's other gaps, that's a fairly recent one, I gather, but if there's other things that we're following, other gaps we have coming. We do have, as we've talked about, several folks have talked about what's going on in the future here with Homestead Park. And frankly, we're not quite sure. We have a general idea. We know we're going to be doing some things, I believe, but we have that plan coming back to us. And if you recall, part of that plan was to analyze the maintenance costs, the operating expenses and what it takes for us to have that park, uh, in whatever new features, uh, come on board. So we'll want to be careful about that and take a good look at that. Because in our scope of work, we provided to the consultants, we asked for them to tell us about maintenance and operating expense. And, uh, that can help us there. Then it can be a guidepost, uh, for us in our decision process. And we may need to prioritize those ongoing costs more than we do the features. Uh, is if, uh, as we realize what this can mean to our, uh, operating expenses. I think too, there, we have, uh, historically, you know, after the city took a big cut and a rough time, uh, getting everything under control, it is challenging to build that up and, and such. But we have done, uh, a, a program of adding new maintenance expense by contracting services. And I think one of the things, if we were to look at this, is also to look at contracting rather than direct employment. Uh, contractors can come and go easily as the situations allow. Direct employment is a much more difficult situation and a bit more for that matter. Uh, but more just emotionally difficult for the organization. Um, if we have some downturns, so direct, uh, contracting, which we do, which I think we do a fair amount of, and historically we've used quite a bit for park maintenance and right away. Uh, and I think we still do. Um, but then we don't have the maintenance costs. We don't have the mower to replace, the blades to sharpen, the gas to buy and the other things that go with it. Uh, if we have a contractor coming in, it's all of a set rate. So there's some offsets there. So if we take a look at this, I, I hope we'll also look at alternatives than a direct deployment uh, and look at contracting as another way to go. As Councilmember Pro Tem Lee mentioned, Flashvote has talked quite a bit about recreation as our number one, uh, most common. And of course, police is number two and about, and police is also about using money for more officers. So it's a natural trade off. And unfortunately, we, we, we're, we're in the seat that gets to figure those trade offs. And there may be a need, uh, to move some dollars back and forth between such things. Um, but it's just one of the challenges. Unless we really do look at it in that holistic way of, uh, what's, what are we not, what are we buying and what are we not buying? Uh, it becomes a little too easy to make our decision. We have to really look and see, you know, what am I going to do with this dollar? Do I pay the rent or do I put money on the table or whatever the natural trade offs are? Uh, and, and all. So, uh, I can appreciate putting some energy into this and getting a sense of where we want to go and developing, uh, an idea of what our options are and what the alternative costs are. Uh, and as we make decisions. The reality is we do have, uh, quite a bit of land available for future parks. Uh, in fact, the park plan that we just approved six months ago, uh, said, we don't need any more land. What we need is to focus on getting parks developed. And so far, we don't have any new parks under development because we need to do more planning. Frankly, we need to make some choices about what to do and what our needs are. And we've got a good document to start, but there needs more energy as to, is, does it turn into a, a nature park or a ball field or whatever it may be? Um, and so those, that's also some competing activity as we get through it. And when we know what it is we want a little tighter, then we can see about putting resources in to get it. And if that's grant funds or whatever it may be, but there's a, so. And we also have other processes where this can come in, such as goal setting from council or the city manager in his, uh, annual budget, uh, that we don't do annual budgets, but in the budget process or in the budget update, uh, particularly if there's a demand for staff. Um, also just, I would hope that we are not making any compromises in the safety of our equipment, of where our children play. And if there's a safety issue, we have professional staff and there's every expectation professional staff will take care of such things. And they'll come to us if they need resources and we will prioritize that if that's the case. Uh, so I hope we don't have safety concerns. I would be surprised and frankly disappointed if that were the case. Um, so those are just a few quick comments. Uh, there's some, certainly some merit in the discussion, uh, but, and, uh, I would like to, if we decide to go down that road, uh, have a little more information and some of the details I've mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, as this is just a study session, um, we're going to try and wrap this portion up and we can, and then Mayor Pro Tem Worthington and myself can work with staff and figuring out next steps to make this, um, move forward. So, um, Councilmember Fleming, final comments? And Councilmember Pro Tem Lee, you had your hand up. Are you not choosing? Okay, so Councilmember Fleming, I'll let you have the final word. You are muted, sir.
There we go.
Yes.
You know, I, you know, I think to, I don't think I know, to Councilmember, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Worthington's points, I, I think everything you said really underscores the necessity to have this proposal, uh, before us. Uh, because instead of us piecemealing, um, the parks issues as we go along, uh, it, it makes more sense to develop a, what I call a comprehensive, uh, proposal or comprehensive plan that addresses all those potentials, whether it's contracted or staff pros and cons for it, whether it's the safety of the equipment or not. Uh, those are all components, uh, of what I think this proposal, once it starts to come together and gel, would be inclusive of that. So it's a very integral, uh, program, if you will, that would come before council and be set into policy. So for all those reasons you've pointed out and, uh, and others who have spoken tonight, I, I see the merits of moving this proposal forward and, and really would encourage that we do so. Uh, and then the, obviously there will be more dialogue and certainly more input, uh, both from council and staff as we start to make this thing gel. But it, it's timely, uh, in its, uh, presentation at the, at this time.
Yes, I want to thank you both for clarifying what your proposal was all about. And I know that, um, Mayor Pro Tem Worthington, myself and staff will work on determining what's next steps are. I do think it was very, very timely on your, on your part to have this proposal. So stay tuned, we will get this figured out and we will see it on a future agenda as, as a, an additional study session or two, so. So thank you very much. Our final item on tonight's agenda is the City Hall reopening and council meetings. Yay, as of today, City Hall was finally open for in-person, um, meetings with, with our citizenry. So, um, our city manager, Mr. Sugg is here to officially tell us what the reopening looked like and what the steps are and what the timeline is for city council meetings, um, to go virtual or in person. So, Mr. Sugg.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. Well, this morning, uh, we reopened City Hall. Um, that was, as you know, the governor, um, allowed, um, you know, with the June 30th was the deadline or was, was the reopening date. Um, we timed it so that we could do this at the beginning of week, being a holiday yesterday. It was today, Tuesday, July 6th. Uh, City Hall's returned to welcoming the public for normal business hours, uh, Monday to, through Friday, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Uh, we've been closed for the last 15 months, um, you know, as, as most other organizations in governmental units. Um, individuals that are uncomfortable visiting City Hall may still find city services available through alternate hybrid options. Um, and we, if you go to our city website, cityofup.com, uh, there is, uh, right on the homepage, you can click on that link and it'll provide, uh, visitors, residents and others with information about how to access those options. So, uh, we've also found that during the pandemic, then the 15 months we were closed, that many did take advantage of those hybrid services. So, um, you know, we, we have a, we have our technology guru, Glenn Valentine, our IT director, to thank for, um, actually, um, getting us ahead of the curve well before the pandemic hit. Um, he didn't know there was going to be a pandemic, but he thought it was a good idea for us to have the capabilities. And we were pretty quick, uh, we made the transition, um, to virtual mode. As you know, he, he, he and his team members trained all the council and staff on how to use Microsoft Teams, which we're using tonight. So, uh, it's worked so well that we have had, um, great success with others. We had, in fact, I learned today, I didn't, Jack Eklund, our city engineer reminded, uh, me that, um, and, and the rest of the staff, that, uh, University Place Engineering Department was the first in the state, I believe, to have a virtual bid opening. So, uh, completely virtual. So congratulations, Jack. Uh, we couldn't have done it without the technology infrastructure and training that we got from, um, uh, our, our wonderful IT department. So again, thank you, Glenn Valentine and your team. Uh, we're encouraging, uh, visitors to abide by the State Department of Health and Tacoma Pierce County Health Department recommendation for masking. Um, masks are available to the public at each floor along with sanitizing stations. Um, I won't go into the details of mask. You can get, you know, when masks should be used and when they shouldn't be used, um, or when they're not needed. But that information, uh, it basically revolves around vaccinations and, um, uh, that information is generally available. Um, police station will be reopened, uh, but in terms of, oh, by the way, in terms of you're not vaccinated, we want you to wear a mask. If you are, uh, and we're not asking or checking for vaccinations, uh, we are, we are, uh, but, and we're, uh, we always encourage people to get vaccinated. We just didn't think that's a good practice. Uh, the state, the governor and the health departments are encouraging people to get vaccinated. But that's not our business. Our business is to provide city services. So we do have appropriate signage, um, as people come into City Hall and into the garage. Um, the police station will be reopening, which, uh, fronts Drexler. They'll be reopening to the public, uh, on Monday, next Monday, July 12th. Uh, and their hours will be from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. They're closed daily for lunch from 11:00 AM to noon. Um, so just, uh, a point of information there. The Pierce County Library, which also shares, uh, a good portion of the ground floor space in our civic building, uh, is also open and welcoming visitors. They've, have been open since June 21st. Uh, they do have a social distancing and face covering requirement while you're on their property. So please take note if you're visiting the library. Um, uh, hybrid council meetings, uh, now on to the council meetings. Uh, council is meeting virtually tonight. Um, uh, the, the, the mayor, the mayor is at, uh, the, at the dais in, 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 at the council chambers. When will council be able to appear in person? We are working on that. Uh, the contractor slash consultant that the council green lighted, uh, a while, a few months ago, uh, is on site tomorrow. Um, there's a lot of cities that have employed the same consultant, so we had to get in line. And they are kicking off their project tomorrow. It's a $50,000 upgrade to our techno, video and audio technology. And I can't tell you exactly what's going to, that's going to comprise. Uh, but, uh, it's going to make it possible to hold a simultaneous virtual and in-person meeting, um, so that it can be as seamless as possible. Uh, when they're done, which is anticipated in August, the planning commission will, will be the first to host a hybrid meeting to test the technology. And I understand we may have a, a, a caller to, to, to test the system, so. Um, uh, and then, uh, if all goes well with the planning commission, uh, the council will follow with an expect, with an expected go-live date in September for your council meetings so that, uh, we can have, um, council then can enjoy the hybrid, uh, count, uh, the hybrid meeting environment. So I'm excited to, uh, obviously I'm excited to see, uh, how the planning commission test goes. And then I'm certainly excited for the council, as I know you are as well, uh, to employ the cyber technology. So that's, that's it. Uh, we're, staff is, uh, very excited, uh, that, that we're now able to, um, provide, uh, you know, and we have all three floors of City Hall open. Um, and, uh, you know, again, it's, uh, it's, it, it was a long path getting there, but it's still a, um, uh, you know, it's still, um, a, a milestone that was reached. And we can thank, you know, the wonderful people in the, in the, in the area of vaccine technology that enabled us to do that. Um, and I can't say enough about the, uh, uh, the, the doctors, nurses and others that got us through this pandemic. So with that, Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sugg. Um, Councilmember Keel, you have your hand raised? You have a question or a comment?
Well, um, a, a question, uh, well, both. Um, thank you, Mayor. So my, my comment is Steve, um, I, I just want to thank you and your team for all of the stuff you guys did during these last 15 or 17 months that we've been out. I mean, um, the city still functions, you know, uh, and, and all of our important things still got done. And, and so I think that's a tribute to you and, and your team, uh, for doing the work of the city, um, during this pandemic, uh, when people couldn't do things face to face. So I appreciate that and I want to thank you and everyone for, for doing that. Uh, I'm excited about, you know, getting back together, uh, with my colleagues in a meeting and things like that. The one thing, and I enjoyed your report, the one thing that wasn't real clear to me was, given that the, the other commission is going to test the hybrid in August or September, whenever, does that mean we're not going to have on, or are we going to still be virtual? Or, or are we gonna do? So yes, so yes, we're still going to be virtual. Even though City Hall is open, we're going to stay virtual until August?
Yeah. You are welcome, Mr. Councilmember Keel. If you feel the urge, you are welcome to join myself and the city clerk on the dais.
Okay, but, but officially the meeting will be, we'll still have this as well? Okay, all right. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Councilmember McCloskey?
All right, thank you. We'll all be excited to open it up in September for some sense of normalcy. I think that's a very healthy, uh, tran- transition into, into it. And as our rep Levitt in, inferred, to keep it a hybrid capability because she, she had noted on her end that citizens were more likely to pop in and give comments. So that was an encouraging note so that they have that virtual component that they don't have to come to our council meetings to make a public comment. They, they can do it virtually through the, through the hybrid technology, which will give them another, another option. And, and, and on a side note, another, uh, city service that was open today, this Community Connection Place opened up to their senior services. They had bingo, they had a lunch. They had, uh, I would say at least 30 participants came for bingo and they were very serious players there. And, uh, in, in addition to not, not only, um, CCP welcoming their back with a, a lovely lunch, uh, they also had a robust meeting afterwards to talk about their programming and some of the, the activities that they would like to see, uh, brought back. So as of today, CCP is officially open for senior services and the programming will be implemented as, as soon as, uh, the feedback is noted. And, and so, and I, and if I'm not called out on jury duty on July 12th, I will be there doing yoga for, for, for the, for the seniors as I had done pre- previously to, to COVID. So I think that's really exciting and to, to also note that even during the pandemic, CCP was providing lunches for our seniors as well as, uh, many of the children in our community and some in the surrounding communities as, as well. She, working in, on Saturdays and Sundays to provide the services. So that's, that's my comment. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions of Mr. Sugg regarding the opening of City Hall and our council meetings? Okay, again, the invitation is out there to any council member that feels the need to meet in person. The dais is open, but it will still be done virtually until such time as we are able to, um, get our technology in, in place to do a hybrid version. So you won't be subjected to the, um, cameras and the awful lighting. So you won't be subjected to the um cameras and the awful lighting if you come in now. So if there are no other questions, that was the end of our agenda. I will then call this meeting over. Good night.